Honorable members of the House of Representatives, I'm voting for them.
Honorable members of the House of Representatives, today is the fourth Monday of July 2022. The Constitution mandates that Congress convenes once every year on the fourth Monday of July to commence its regular session. Pursuant to establish parliamentary rules and practice, I hereby call the first regular session of the 19th Congress to order. Please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem to be led by Ms. Carla Estrada of Tingog Partelis.
Bayang Magiliw, perlas nang silanganan, alab nang puso sa dipdip mo'y buhay. Lupang hinirang, duyan ka nang magiting. Sa manlulupig, di ka pa sisil. Sa dagat at bundok sa simoy at sa langit mong boghaw, may dilag ang tula at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang kislap nang watawat mo'y tagumpay na nagningning. Ang bituin at araw niya, kailan pa may di magdidilim. Lupa nang araw ng walhatit pagsinta. Buhay ay langit sa feeling mo. Aming ligaya na pag may mangapi, ang mamatay nang dahil sa'yo.
Please remain standing for the docology to be performed by Ms. Jonah Carmely B. Calibuso.
Father in heaven, teach me, I pray, to walk as thy witness on earth. Strengthen my spirit and grant me the faith to serve as the Savior would serve. Let me be thy to the wanderer by night, compass and guide to the seeker. Let thy love shine in me, teach me to be an example of the believers. Where there is sorrow, help me impart the hope and the comfort of truth. Where there is suffering, open my heart to do as the Savior would do. Let me be thy to the wanderer by night, compass and guide to the seeker. Let thy love shine in me, teach me to be an example of the believers. Where there is sorrow, guide down my hand to do as the Savior would give. Where there is fear, give me courage to stand and live as the Savior would live. Let me be thy to the wanderer by night, compass and guide to the seeker. Let thy love shine in me, teach me to be an example of the believers. Let thy love shine in me, teach me to be an example of the believers.
Before we proceed, we would like to acknowledge the presence of the Vice President of the Republic of the Philippines, Her Excellency Sarah Zimmerman Duterte. Welcome to the House of Representatives. The Deputy Secretary General of the Legislative Operations Department will now call the roll of members of the House of Representatives elected from legislative districts apportioned among the provinces, cities and municipalities, and partelis organizations in alphabetical order.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, national capital region, city of Caloocan, First District, Honorable Oscar G. Malapitan; Second District, Honorable Mary Mitzi L. Cahayon Uy; Third District, Honorable Dean Asistio; City of Las Pinas; Loan District, Honorable Camille A. Villar; City of Makati; First District, Honorable Romolo Kid Peña Jr.; Second District, Honorable Luis N. Campos Jr.; City of Malabon; Loan District, Honorable Josephine Veronique J.R. Lacson Noel; City of Mandaluyong; Loan District, Honorable Neptali M. Gonzalez II; City of Manila; First District, Honorable Ernesto M. Dionisio Jr.; Second District, Honorable Rolando M. Valeriano; Third District, Honorable Joel R. Chua; Fourth District, Honorable Edward Vera Perez Maceda; Fifth District, Honorable Erwin C. Teng; Sixth District, Honorable Benvenido M. Abante Jr.; City of Marikina; First District, Honorable Marjorie Ann A. Teodoro; Second District, Honorable Stella Luz A. Kimbo; City of Manila; Loan District, Honorable Jaime R. Fresnedi; City of Navotas; Loan District, Honorable Tobias Reynold M. Tianco; City of Paranyake; First District, Honorable Edwin L. Olivares; Second District, Honorable Gus S. Tambunting; Pasay City; Loan District, Honorable Antonino G. Calixto; Pasig City; Loan District, Honorable Romanti Romolo; Quezon City; First District, Honorable Juan Carlos Arjo C. Ataidé; Second District, Honorable Ralph Wendell P. Tulfo; Third District, Honorable Franz S. Pumaren; Fourth District, Honorable Marvin D. Rilio; Fifth District, Honorable Patrick Michael D. Vargas; Sixth District, Honorable Marie Vicco Pilar; City of San Juan; Loan District, Honorable Isabel Maria G. Zamora; City of Taguig, First Consular District, Pateros; Loan District, Honorable Ricardo S. Cruz Jr.; City of Taguig, Second Consular District; Loan District, Honorable Amparo Maria J. Zamora; City of Venezuela; First District, Honorable Rex Gachalian; Second District, Honorable Eric M. Martinez; Region 1, Ilocos Region, Ilocos Norte; First District, Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos; Second District, Honorable Angelo Marcos Barba; Ilocos Sur; First District, Honorable Ronald V. Singson; Second District, Honorable Christine Singson Mihan; La Union; First District, Honorable Francisco Paulo P. Ortega the 5th; Second District, Honorable Dante S. Garcia; Pangasinan; First District, Honorable Arthur F. Celeste; Second District, Honorable Marco Kowanko; Third District, Honorable Maria Rachel J. Arenas; Fourth District, Honorable Christopher V.P. de Venecia; Fifth District, Honorable Ramon N. Guico Jr.; Sixth District, Honorable Marlin L. Primicias Agabas; Region 2, Cagayan Valley; Batanes; Loan District, Honorable Siriaco B. Gato Jr.; Cagayan; First District, Honorable Ramon C. Nolasco Jr.; Second District, Honorable Baby Aleen Vargas Alfonso; Third District, Honorable Joseph Giorgio L. Lara; Isabella; First District, Honorable Antonio Tony Petti Albano; Second District, Honorable Ed Christopher S. Go; Third District, Honorable Ian Paul L.D.; Fourth District, Honorable Joseph S. Tan; Fifth District, Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos T.D. the 3rd; Sixth District, Honorable Faustino Ino A.D. the 5th; Nuevo Viscaya; Loan District, Honorable Luisa Lauren Cuaresma; Quirino; Loan District, Honorable Midi N. Kuwa; Region 3, Central Luzon; Aurora; Loan District, Honorable Romel T. Angara; Bataan; First District, Honorable Geraldine B. Roman; Second District, Honorable Albert S. Garcia; Third District, Honorable Maria Angela S. Garcia; Bulacan; First District, Honorable Dani A. Domingo; Second District, Honorable Augustina Dominique C. Pancho; Third District, Honorable Lorna C. Silverio; Fourth District, Honorable Lina Bell Ruth R. Villarica; Fifth District, Honorable Ambrosio C. Cruz Jr.; Sixth District, Honorable Salvador A. Plato; City of San Jose del Monte; Loan District, Honorable Florida Rita P. Robes; Nueva Ecija; First District, Honorable Michaela Angela B. Swansing; Second District, Honorable Joseph Gilbert F. Violago; Third District, Honorable Rosana Ria V. Vergara; Fourth District, Honorable Emerson D. Pascual; Pampanga; First District, Honorable Carmelo John B. Lazatin the 2nd; Second District, Honorable Gloria Macapagal Arroyo; Third District, Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr.; Fourth District, Honorable Anna York P. Bondo; Tarlac; First District, Honorable Jaime D. Kowanko; Second District, Honorable Christian Tel A. Yap; Third District, Honorable Noel Bong N. Rivera; Zambales; First District, Honorable Jefferson F. Conghun; Second District, Honorable Doris E. Maniquis; Region 4 A. Calabarzon; Batangas; First District, Honorable Eric R. Buain; Second District, Honorable Jervil R. Louistro; Third District, Honorable Maria Teresa V. Coliantes; Fourth District, Honorable Leanda V. Bolilia; Fifth District, Honorable Mario Vittorio Marvi A. Marino; Sixth District, Honorable Ralph G. Rector; Cavite; First District, Honorable Ramon Jolo B. Revilia the 3rd; Second District, Honorable Lani Mercado Revilia; Third District, Honorable Adrian J.C. Advincula; Fourth District, Honorable Elpideo F. Barzaga; Fifth District, Honorable Roy M. Loyola; Sixth District, Honorable Antonio A. Ferrer; Eighth District, Honorable Anniela Bianca D. Tolentino; Laguna; First District, Honorable Marie Renee Ann Lourdes G. Matibag; Second District, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez; Third District, Honorable Loreto S. Amante; Fourth District, Honorable Maria Jamina Catherine B. Agarao; City of Binyan; Loan District, Honorable Marlin Len B. Alonte; City of Calamba; Loan District, Honorable Cherise Ann C. Hernandez Alcantara; City of Santa Rosa; Loan District, Honorable Dan S. Fernandez; Quezon; First District, Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga; Second District, Honorable David J.J. C. Suarez; Third District, Honorable Reinante U. Arrogancia; Fourth District, Honorable Keith Mika Attorney Mike D.L. Tan; Rizal; First District, Honorable Michael John R. Duavit; Second District, Honorable Emigdio P. Tanwatko the 3rd; Third District, Honorable Jose Arturo S. Garcia Jr.; Fourth District, Honorable Juan Fidel Felipe F. Nograles; City of Antipolo; First District, Honorable Roberto V. Puno; Second District, Honorable Romeo M. Acop; Mi Maropa; Marinduke; Loan District, Honorable Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco; Occidental Mindoro; Loan District, Honorable Leodi F. Tariela; Oriental Mindoro; First District, Honorable Arnan C. Panaligan; Second District, Honorable Alfonso V. Umalí Jr.; Palawan; First District, Honorable Edgardo L. Zalvami; Second District, Honorable C. C. Álvarez; Third District, Honorable Edward S. Hagadorn; Romblón; Loan District, Honorable Eleandro Jesús F. Madrona; Region 5, Bicol Region; Albay; First District, Honorable Edsel C. Lagman; Second District, Honorable Joey Sarte Salceda; Third District, Honorable Fernando T. Cabredo; Camarines Norte; First District, Honorable Josefina B. Talliado; Second District, Honorable Rosemary C. Panotes; Camarines Sur; First District, Honorable Chiyoshi Anthony G. Oribata; Second District, Honorable Luis Raymond L. Ray F. Villafuerte Jr.; Third District, Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado Jr.; Fourth District, Honorable Arnie B. Fuentebelia; Fifth District, Honorable Miguel Luis R. Villafuerte; Catanduanes; Loan District, Honorable Yolojio R. Rodriguez; Masbate; First District, Honorable Ricardo T. Co; Second District, Honorable Olga Ara T. Co; Third District, Honorable Wilton Tonton T. Co; Sorsogón; First District, Honorable Marie Bernadette G. Escudero; Second District, Honorable Manuel L. Fortes Jr.; Region 6, Western Visayas; Aclan; First District, Honorable Carlito S. Marquez; Second District, Honorable Teodorico Jaresco Jr.; Antike; Loan District, Honorable Antonio A.A. B. Legarda Jr.; Capiz; First District, Honorable Manuel Tawi Bilyones; Second District, Honorable Jane T. Castro; Gimaras; Loan District, Honorable Maria Lucille L. Nava M.D.; Iluilo; First District, Honorable Janet L. Garin; Second District, Honorable Michael B. Goriseta; Third District, Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor; Fourth District, Honorable Virginal G. Biron; Fifth District, Honorable Raúl Boboy C. Tupas; City of Iluilo; Loan District, Honorable Julian Jam Baronda; Negroes Occidental; First District, Honorable Gerardo P. Valmayor Jr.; Second District, Honorable Alfredo D. Maranyon the 3rd; Third District, Honorable Jose Francisco Kiko B. Benítez Ph.D.; Fourth District, Honorable Juliet Marie De Leon Ferrer; Fifth District, Honorable Emilio Bernardino L. Yulo; Sixth District, Honorable Mercedes K. Álvarez; City of Bacolod; Loan District, Honorable Greg G. Gasataya; Region 7, Central Visayas; Bohol; First District, Honorable Edgar M. Chato; Second District, Honorable Maria Vanessa C. Aumentado; Third District, Honorable Christine Alexi B. Chutor; Cebu; First District, Honorable Rea May A. Gulyas; Second District, Honorable Edsel A. Galeos; Third District, Honorable Pablo John F. Garcia; Fourth District, Honorable Janice Z. Salimbangan; Fifth District, Honorable Vincent Franco Duke D. Frasco; Sixth District, Honorable Daphne A. Lagon; Seventh District, Honorable Peter John D. Calderón; City of Cebu; First District, Honorable Rachel Margarit B. Delmar; Second District, Honorable Eduardo R. Rama; City of Lapulapu; Loan District, Honorable Maria Cynthia K. Chan; City of Mandawe; Loan District, Honorable Emery Lollipop Owano Dison; Negroes Oriental; First District, Honorable Jocelyn C. Limcaychong; Second District, Honorable Manuel T. Sagarberia; Third District, Honorable Arnolfo Arnie A. Tevez Jr.; Sikihor; Loan District, Honorable Zaldi S. Villia; Region 8, Eastern Visayas; Biliran; Loan District, Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy J. Espina Jr.; Eastern Samar; Loan District, Honorable Maria Fe. R. Abunda; Leite; First District, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes; Second District, Honorable Lolita T. Javier; Third District, Honorable Anna Victoria Veloso Toazon; Fourth District, Honorable Richard I. Gómez; Fifth District, Honorable Carl Nicolas C. Carey; Northern Samar; First District, Honorable Paul Ruiz Daza; Second District, Honorable Harris Christopher M. Ongchuwan; Samar; First District, Honorable Stephen James T. Tan; Second District, Honorable Reynolds Michael T. Tan; Southern Leite; Honorable Luz Mercado First District; Second District, Honorable Christopher Son M. Yap; Region 9, Zamboanga Peninsula; Zamboanga del Norte; Second District, Honorable Glona G. Labadlabad; Third District, Honorable Adrian Michael A. Amatong; Zamboanga del Sur; First District, Honorable Divina Grace C.U.; Second District, Honorable Jaisal Victoria C.U.; City of Zamboanga; First District, Honorable Kimir Adanti Olaso; Second District, Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Delipe; Zamboanga Cibugai; First District, Honorable Wilter Y. Palma; Second District, Honorable Antonietta R. Udella; Region 10, Northern Mindanao; Bukidnon; First District, Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba; Second District, Honorable Jonathan Keith T. Flores; Third District, Honorable Jose Maria R. Zubiri Jr.; Fourth District, Honorable Larni L. Roque; Kamigin; Loan District, Honorable Jordan Jesús M. Romualdo; Lanau del Norte; First District, Honorable Mohamed Khalid Q. Dimaporo; Second District, Honorable City Amina Q. Dimaporo; City of Iligan; Loan District, Honorable Celso G. Regencia; Misamis Occidental; First District, Honorable Jason P. Almonte; Second District, Honorable Sancho Fernando F. Oaminal; Misamis Oriental; First District, Honorable Christian S. Unabia; Second District, Honorable Evgeny Vicente B. Emano; City of Cagayan de Oro; First District, Honorable Lordon G. Suwan; Second District, Honorable Rufus B. Rodriguez; Region 11, Davao Region; Davao de Oro; First District, Honorable Maria Carmen S. Zamora; Second District, Honorable Ruell Peter Gonzaga; Davao del Norte; First District, Honorable Pantalyon D. Álvarez; Second District, Honorable Alan Aldo R. Duhali; Davao del Sur; Loan District, Honorable John Tracy F. Cagas; City of Davao; First District, Honorable Paulo Z. Duterte; Second District, Honorable Vincent J. Garcia; Third District, Honorable Isidro T. Ungab; Davao Occidental; Loan District, Honorable Claudia P. Bautista; Davao Oriental; First District, Honorable Nelson L. Dayanghirang; Second District, Honorable Chino Miguel D. Almario; Region 12, Socsergen; Cotobato; First District, Honorable Joselito Joel S. Sackdalan; Second District, Honorable Rudy S. Kawagdan D.P.A.; Third District, Honorable Maria Alana Samantha T. Santos; Sarangani; Loan District- Third District Honorable Maria Alana Samantha T Santos Sarangani Lone District Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon South Cotobato First District Honorable Isidro B Lumayag Second District Honorable Peter P B Miguel City of General Santos Lone District Honorable Loreto B Acharon Sultan Kodarat First District Honorable Princess Ryan M Sakaluran Second District Honorable Horacio P Swansing Junior Bangsamoro Tony's Region in Muslim Mindanao Basilan Lone District Honorable Mujiv S Hataman Lanau del Sur First District Honorable Zeur Raqman A Adyong Second District Honorable Yaser Alonto Balindong Magindanao First District Honorable City Shahara I Mastura Second District Honorable Muhammad P Paglas Sulu First District Honorable Samir A Tan Second District Honorable Munir N Arbison Junior Tawi Tawi Lone District Honorable Dimzar M Sally Cordillera Administrative Region Abra Lone District Honorable Ching B Bernos Apayao Lone District Honorable Eleonore C Bulut Begtang Benguet Lone District Honorable Eric Goyp City of Baguio Lone District Honorable Mark O Go Ifogao Lone District Honorable Solomon R Chungalaw Kalinga Lone District Honorable Alan Jesse C Mangawang Mountain Province Lone District Honorable Maximo Y Dalog Junior Caraga Administrative Region Agusan del Norte First District Honorable C S Aquino II Second District Honorable Dale B Corvera Agusan del Sur First District Honorable Alfelito Alfel M Bascub Second District Honorable Edibong G Plaza Dinagat Island Lone District Honorable Alan Uno B Ecleo Surigao del Norte First District Honorable Francisco Jose Bingo F Matugas II CPA Cesso LLB Second District Honorable Robert Ace Barberz Surigao del Sur First District Honorable Romeo S Momo Second District Honorable Johnny T Pimentel Partelist One Patriotic Coalition of Marginalized Nationals Incorporated One Pacman Honorable Michael L Romero Ph D Angbuklod ng mga motorista ng Pilipinas One Rider Partelist Honorable Bonifacio L Bosita Angbuklod ng mga motorista ng Pilipinas One Rider Partelist Honorable Ramon Rodrigo L Gutierrez Pagtibay at palaguin ang pangkabuhayang Pilipino Four Peace Honorable Jonathan Clement B Avalos II Four Peace Honorable Marcelino C Libanan Ang Asosasyon sang mangunguma nga bisaya owa mangunguma Incorporated Aambis Owa Honorable Lex Anthony Chris A Colada Abang Lingkod Incorporated Abang Lingkod Jose Joseph Stephen Karaps Espaduano Abono Partelist Abono Honorable Robert Raymond M Estrella Anti Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated ACIS Honorable Jeffrey Soriano Anti Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated ACIS Honorable Jocelyn P Tulfo Anti Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated ACIS Honorable Edvick G Yap Act Teachers Partelist Act Teachers Honorable Franz L Castro Agriculture Agricultural Sector Alliance of the Philippines Agap Honorable Nikanor B Bilyones Agimat ng masa Agimat Honorable Brian B Revilia Agri Agra na reforma para sa magsasakan ng Pilipinas Agri Honorable Wilbert T Lee Ako Bicol Political Party Ako Bicol Honorable Raúl Angelo D Bonggalon Ako Bicol Political Party Ako Bicol Honorable Elizalde Esco Ako Bisaya Partelist Ako Bisaya Honorable Sunny S L Lagón Ako Ilukano Ako Honorable Richel Singhson Alliance Organizations Networks and Associations of the Philippines Incorporated Alona Honorable Anna Maria Villarosa Suarez Anwaray Partelist Anwaray Honorable Florencio G Noel Alagaan natin ang alagaan natin ating kalusugan anak kalusugan Honorable Ray Florence T Reyes Alianza ng mga mamamayang probinsiano ang probinsiano Honorable Alfred C De Los Santos Agrikultura ngayon gawing akma at tama angat Honorable Reynaldo S Tamayo Association of Philippine Electric Cooperatives APEC Honorable Sergio C Dago Abante Pangasinan Ilukano Party Api Honorable Michael M Warden Bagong Generación BH Honorable Bernadette BH Herrera Barangay Health Wellness Party BHW Honorable Angelica Natasha Co Bicol Saro Honorable Nicolas C Enciso VIII Citizens Battle Against Corruption Cibac Honorable Eduardo Brother Eddie C Villanueva Coop Natco Partelist Coop Natco Honorable Filimon M Espares Construction Workers Solidarity CWS Honorable Tirso Edwin Gardiola Dumper Philippines Taxi Drivers Association Incorporated Dumper PTDA Honorable Claudine Diana D Bautistalim Duterte Youth Partelist Duterte Youth Honorable Drixie May S Cardema Gabriela Women's Party Gabriela Honorable Arlene D Brosas Galing Sapuso Party GP Party Honorable Jose Gay G Paddiernos Kabataan Partelist Kabataan Honorable Raúl Daniel A Manuel Kabalikat ng mamamayan kabayan Honorable Ron P Salo Kalinga Advocacy for Social Empowerment and Nation Building Through Easing Poverty Incorporated Kalinga Honorable Iringay F Saulog Kusug Tausug Honorable Shurni A Tambut LPGA LP LPG Marketers Association Incorporated LPGMA Honorable Alan UT Malasakit at Bayanihan Foundation Incorporated Malasakit at Bayanihan Honorable Anthony Rolando T Golles Junior Manila Teachers Association and Lone Associations Incorporated Manila Teachers Honorable Virhilio S Lakson Marino Samahan ng mga siman Incorporated Marino Honorable Sandro L Gonzalez One Filipinos Worldwide Coalition Partelist OFW Honorable Marisa Delmar P Maxino Public Safety Alliance for Transformation and Rule of Law Incorporated Patrol Honorable Jorge Patrol Bustos Puersan ng Bayaning Atleta PBA Honorable Margarita Ignacia B Nograles Philippine Rural Electric Cooperatives Association Incorporated Philrica Honorable Presley C de Jesús Pinatatag na ugnayan para sa mga oportunidad sa pabahay ng masa pinuno Honorable Ivan Howard A Ginto Probinsiano ako Honorable Rudy Caesar G Farinhas I Pusong Pinoy Partelist Pusong Pinoy Honorable Journey Jet V Nisay Social Amelioration and Genuine Intervention in Poverty Sagip Honorable Radante D Marcoletta Social Amelioration and Genuine Intervention in Poverty Sagip Honorable Carolyn L Tanchay Coalition of Associations of Senior Citizens in the Philippines Incorporated Senior Citizens Partelist Honorable Rodolfo Ompong M Ordanes Talino at galing ng Pinoy TGP Honorable Jose Bong J Tevez Junior Tingog Sinerangan Tingog Honorable Gieda Marie K Romualdes Tingog Sinerangan Tingog Honorable Jude A Asidre The Trade Union Congress Party TUCP Honorable Raymond Democritos Mendoza Tutok Tuwin Honorable Samuel S Versosa Junior Uswag Ilongo Party Uswag Ilongo Honorable James Jojo A Ang Junior
Ilan lang sir hirap na eh dati kasi Okay lang Okay lang kasi Set natin 'yung president Pakargaan na lang eh dapat tumumpisa pa lang kinakargaan nila eh di ba Dapat nga pag tumara't iniisa telecheck na eh di ba Gyal na bahagian na man eh Ayan oh mahal nga eh dapat parin present natin 'yan sobra Ayan ah pumasasalita parin Alay arto oh Hindi bisita ba hindi bisita bang pumasasalitan member kasi ngayon parin This is already considered the whole lahat to ah in VIP oh Gyal na den forty parin Parin eh parin napati- napatiimbre na man pag VIP talaga Tapo station ano ahead of time iaan nila procedure Parin wala na parin at andit sagdala na sa palibas Mmm Laishas sa mostong parin Laishas sa mostong Napatalibot eh Pakarot sa atin Mita ko pagka Kurul Kurul sila ngayon parin Dapat hindi ka ano kaya nakaka- anehirapan din sila magkano eh lakad ng lakad Talaga 'yan oh PSD pero parin pag ano naman sila medyo lakas may lumalapit eh kaya ano eh Di magbangga Hirap parin Nakakaiba nakakaiba Namie pag nagnominal tayo eh talaga Paabot na Oo mahal wala kakulo 'yan Meraming ano Meraming ano. Ang dali sa harap, eh. Nakita rin, pero dapat pagkatitan, present na yun, sila dapat na natin, pa'ri. Kasi ding, kung taritak sa harap. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Aparin din ito sa. Uh, sir. You're meaning before church. The roots provide for a better for a more. Everybody will be. Both, first round, we will call together. Don't fall on me, say, call for both. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Pero once, nakaboot na, on the first. Thank you.
Hello. Hmm.
If you're abstaining, you have to go to the. Yes, sir. We will not. Hindi ko naman yung malaygano, sir, kung what is your vote. Dos pa'ri, erap kasig na kita iskura, eh, sa first round. Pagboto na'tin, di na atin maano, eh. Pagka-pakina binamit, ringilatin. Apo, apo, ipo. Na, ano, pwede pide sa namansan, eh, apo.
Mister Presiding Officer, the roll call shows that three hundred nine members responded to the call.
There being three hundred nine members who responded to the call, the Chair declares a presence of a quorum. To ensure all the proceedings, the Chair designates the Honorable Manuel Jose Manix Semdalipe, Representative of the Second District of San Boaga City, as the Acting Floor Leader. Before we open the table for the nomination of candidates for the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives, let me state for the record that the House rules provides that the members who vote for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority in the House, and they shall elect from among themselves the Majority Leader. The Minority Leaders have been elected by the members of the minority. The House has already established a procedure for this, and the same court in the case of Pagilat versus Alvarez has already affirmed that the House has the power to determine the rules of its proceedings.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that we now open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There's a motion to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives are now in order.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the First District of Ilocos Norte, the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander Araneta Marcos, be recognized to make his nomination.
The distinguished representative from the First District of Ilocos Norte, the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos, is recognized.
Mister Presiding Officer, with unity at the core of the government as our shared vision for the next six years, the House of Representatives requires, now more than ever, a leader that embodies inclusivity, possesses unquestionable competency, and feels genuinely for the people we are all duty-bound to serve. Someone who is of the belief that, as the dust has settled from these elections, the time for politics must come to an end and public service must begin. As such, among the distinguished members of this August chamber, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes is the most qualified to lead the House of Representatives to accomplish this formidable task. In his twelve solid years of legislative experience, he is best known as a consensus builder, regarded with great affection and respect by most, if not all, members of this institution, no matter where they are on the political spectrum. We know that it is not an easy feat for a person to listen to and consolidate support from more than three hundred elected officials, all of whom are leaders in their own right. Yet, Representative Romualdes seems to have found this balance. He values everyone's opinion and exudes the charm to get everyone to voluntarily and conscientiously work together towards a common goal. Because of this positive trait, he, along with other members of the Eighteenth Congress, were able to usher with expediency the two critical Bionihan Bills in the House of Representatives during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, just when the country needed these laws the most. Representative Romualdes's competence is far beyond dispute. His professional experience as a lawyer and banking executive allow him to take an analytical and corporate approach to economic issues that require suitable legislation. With him as the House Majority Leader, Congress was able to pass laws supportive of economic growth, such as the CREATE Law, as well as measures amending the Public Service Act and the Foreign Investments Act of 1991. Such accomplishments have shown that he is able to strike a healthy equilibrium between economic interests and public welfare. Moreover, Representative Martin Romualdes is well-loved by the people of the First District of Leyte. He is popular for his meaningful community programs and initiatives that positively impact the lives of many of his constituents. Should he be the next leader of the House of Representatives, we can only expect with much enthusiasm that his genuine interest and compassion for people will be reflective of the facets that the Nineteenth Congress hopes to possess. Much has been said regarding the familial relations of Representative Romualdes to the President, but for reasons I have stated prior, one can truly ascertain that his qualifications are beyond sufficient to lead us to great heights. To say that he has not worked his way up through various positions in Congress would be a grave injustice to the effort he has put into his role throughout his twelve years as a legislator. Consequently, it is through this rationale that I put forth the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the twenty-fourth Speaker of the House of Representatives for the Nineteenth Congress of the Republic of the Philippines. Thank you.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Sixth District of Batangas, the Honorable Ralph G. Recto, to be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Sixth District of Batangas, the Honorable Ralph G. Recto, is recognized.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Mister Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, it is my privilege and honor to second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as Speaker of the House of Representatives of the Nineteenth Congress. May I submit for insertion into the records the copy of my manifestation, but let me quote excerpts from it. Representative Romualdes can shepherd the bills that can help our country as skillfully as he can stop the ones that harm our people. He knows the policies that need to be crafted and the pragmatism to get them passed. I am confident that with him, a constitutionalist at the helm, he will keep the plenary a hospitable space for all opinions while keeping the conveyor belt of loss moving. In these trying times, he is the leader we need who could marshal our collective will and wisdom in tackling the brave and bold things that must be done. It is therefore my honor to work with him as our speaker. I so move, Mister Presiding Officer.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Third District of Davao City, the Honorable Isidro T. Ungab, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Third District of Davao City, the Honorable Isidro T. Ungab, is recognized.
Mister Presiding Officer, it is my honor to second the nomination of the Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the Nineteenth Congress. He is very much qualified, our former Majority Floor Leader in the Eighteenth Congress, and it is with pride and honor that I second this nomination. Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the First District of Antipolo City, the Honorable Roberto V. Puno, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the First District of Antipolo City, the Honorable Roberto V. Puno, is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the officers and members of the National Unity Party, it is my esteemed privilege and honor to second the nomination of the distinguished gentleman from the First Legislative District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, as the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Mister Presiding Officer, I have known the nominee Congressman Romualdes since 2007, when we both entered into the halls of Congress as neophyte congressmen of the Fourteenth Congress. I know him to be a man of intelligence, a man of integrity, a man of industry. Our nation needs someone who is familiar with the pulse of the nation. who is familiar with the pulse of the nation and with the rigors and adversities of leadership. It is my humble submission that Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes is best suited to undertake the role of Speaker of the Nineteenth Congress. I so move, Mister Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Lone District of Las Pinas, the Honorable Camille A. Villar, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Lone District of Las Pinas City, the Honorable Camille A. Villar, is recognized.
Mister Presiding Officer, it is with great honor, on behalf of the Nationalista Party, that I second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the Nineteenth Congress. Representative Romualdes is a dedicated public servant who champions the welfare of the Filipino people, a statesman who preserves the integrity and unity of this institution, a leader whose ultimate vision is the greatness of this nation. I so move, Mister Presiding Officer.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Second District of Ilocos Sur, the Honorable Christine Sinson Mihang, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Second District of Ilocos Sur, the Honorable Christine Sinson Mihang, is recognized.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Nationalist People's Coalition Party, I second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as Speaker of the House of Representatives. As we usher in the Nineteenth Congress, we would be fortunate to have at the helm a man who has proven himself a reliable captain and navigator in what has been and continues to be one of the most turbulent periods in our country. The Honorable Romualdes maneuvered these uncharted waters with skill and grace, exhibiting a sublime knowledge of the law, a political acumen worthy of his family pedigree, and an unfappable and genial nature that served as a bomb to flaring and fraying tempers in such troubled times. I so move, Mister Presiding Officer.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the TUCP Partelis, the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the TUCP Partelis, the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza, is recognized.
Mister Speaker, as it has been my distinct, rare, and privilege to serve six distinguished speakers, now onto my seventh, with much pride personally, on behalf of the sixteen-strong PCFI Partelis Coalition Foundation Incorporated, under the strong leadership of our leader Congressman Zaldeco, I, we gladly second the nomination of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes of the First District of Leyte to be our Speaker of the House of Representatives of the Nineteenth Congress. The track record of Representative Romualdes in both private and public sector is unblemished. His performance as a Majority Leader, and we know this by heart, has both sterling and a highest caliber. In these trying times, pandemic and all, the Partelis Coalition has full faith that Honorable Romualdes is the best person at the right place at the right time to steer us towards the right direction of unity of our country, confidently rebuilt under the administration of President Bongbong Marcos. Together, the Partelis Bloc, all Partelis Bloc representatives feel that with Representative Romualdes at the helm of the House of Representatives, it will blaze new trails, bringing hope and decency to the lives of all Filipinos. We know that Speaker Representative Martin Romualdes will bring a steady hand, as always, an open mind, as always, and listening ear to us and to the nation, a clear gaze to the future, a clarity of vision in assessing our current challenges as we bring us together, bring us together in this House of the people to do God's work and truly serve the common good. Clearly, Mister Speaker, you have our confidence, our trust, to bring us upward, forward, forward together, sir. Mabuhay si Speaker Romualdes. Mabuhay kitatanan dinis sa congreso. Mabuhay ang Pilipinas.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Third District of Pampanga, the Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr., be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Third District of Pampanga, the Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr., is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. On behalf of the PDP Party, I rise to second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. He served exceptionally well as Majority Leader in the last Congress, and I have faith that he will do even better as the Speaker of the House in the Nineteenth Congress. He is steady, reliable, fair, and receptive to the concerns of his colleagues. I truly believe that it is the best position to implement the legislative agenda of the Nineteenth Congress. So, Mister Speaker, Luwid ka, Speaker Martin, mabuhay ka, and my fellow kapampangan, because the mother of Speaker Martin is also from Pampanga. So, move, Mister Speaker.
Mister Presiding Officer, there being no other nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, I move that the table for nominations be closed.
There is a motion to close the table for nominations for Speaker of the House of Representatives. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is carried.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move that we now proceed with the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives is now in order. The Deputy Secretary-General of the Legislative Operations Department, we now call the roll of members, may request every member to state the name of the candidate he or she is voting for as Speaker of the House of Representatives upon being called.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abalos. Abante.
Mister Speaker, I vote yes for the next Speaker, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Abunda.
Acharon.
Yes, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for the Speaker.
Asidre.
Mister Presiding Officer, Tingong Partelis votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Akop.
Mister Presiding Officer, the Second District of the City of Antipolo votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Adyong.
Ss millahirrahmanirrahim. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala hi wabaraka'tu. Mapiya kapibitar kano langon. Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the good people of the First District of Lano del Sur, whom I have the distinct privilege and the honor to represent them in the Nineteenth Congress, I vote for the speakership. I vote yes to the speakership of Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte.
Advinkula.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Third Legislative District of Cavite, I vote for the Honorable Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Agarao.
From the Port District of Laguna, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Alba.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Bukinnon, it is my honor to cast my vote for Representative Martin Romualdes for Speaker of the House of the Nineteenth Congress.
Albano.
Mister Speaker, as a personal friend of him, I know that he is very much capable to lead the Nineteenth Congress to become a good speaker, and I dare even to say for the future that the next Speaker of the Twentieth, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for Speaker.
Almario.
Mister Presiding Officer, the new administration under the leadership of President Ferdinand Bongbong Romualdes Marcos Jr. and Vice-President Sara Zimmermanduterte is not only very promising, but surely the key to our country to bounce back well and even better than our neighboring countries. It is in this light that all the more we need a legislative branch of the government who can deliver the corresponding laws to complement the executive branch. The legislative branch, especially the Nineteenth Congress and the House of Representatives, needs a leader who can steer more than three hundred congressmen, and I am one hundred and one percent certain that Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes is the person best qualified to lead this House as its Speaker. Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Almonte.
The First District of Misamis Occidental votes for our next Speaker, Representative Martin Romualdes.
Alonte.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the Lone District of Binian, I vote Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the Nineteenth Congress. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Alvarez Jose.
On behalf of the people of Second District of Palawan, we happily vote for Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Alvarez Mercedes.
On behalf of the Chicks area or the Sixth District of Negroes Occidental, we vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Alvarez Pantalyon.
Mister Presiding Officer, I vote for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Amante.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Third District of Laguna, I vote Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Amatong.
I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Ang. Angara.
On behalf of the people of Aurora, Representative Romel Angara votes for Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the Nineteenth Congress. Thank you.
Aquino.
May I'm buntag sa tanan mga congressman, my fellow colleagues in Congress. Ang boto ko po as representative of the First District of Pagusan del Norte, ay matagal ng inaantay kong maging Speaker, aking kompare, Martin Romualdes.
Arbison.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Second District of Sulu, our vote is for Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Arenas.
Mister Presiding Officer, please allow me again first to acknowledge the presence of our Vice President Inday Sara Duterte. On behalf of the Third District of Pangasinan, we vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Arrogancia.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Third District of Quezon Province, I vote yes for the next Speaker of the House, Representative Martin Romualdes. My vote is yes. Thank you.
Assistio. Asistio.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the representative from 3rd District of Caloocan City, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ataidi.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of District 1, Keston City, our vote goes to your honorable Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Aumentado.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as a representative in the 2nd District of Bohol, I vote yes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the Speaker in the 19th Congress in the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Balindong.
Bismillahirohmanirohim, Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Ta'ala Hwabarakatu. In behalf of the 2nd District of Lanau del Sur, I vote for my boss Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Barba.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of the Province of Ilocoz Norte, our vote is for Congressman Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Barber's.
Mr. Presiding Officer, it is both an honor and privilege to vote for a gentleman in the true sense of the word. This gentleman, Mr. Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, possesses the quality of a capable and a good leader. He has unquestionable integrity and a proven track record, to say the least. In the steering of the 18th and 19th Congress as the majority leader, he has proven a sterling track record. And never a doubt, Mr. Speaker, that this representation and in behalf of the people of the 2nd District of Surigao del Norte, we vote in support for the next Speaker of the 19th Congress, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Baronda.
Mr. Speaker, having worked with the next Speaker for three years as our majority floor leader, in behalf of the 1st District of Ilo-Ilo City, my vote for the friend, true friend, for all or to everyone, vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Barzaga.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the voice of the city of Dasmarinas supports Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House for this Congress. Thank you very much.
Basco.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Presiding Chair, in behalf of the 1st District of Agusan del Sur, I vote for my idol Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Bautista.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 1st District of Dama Occidental and the Lacas Party family, yes to Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker.
Bautista Lim.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of Dumper PTDA Partilis, my vote goes to Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Benitez.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 3rd District of Negroes Occidental, our vote is for our friend Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Bernos.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 1st Legislative District of Abra, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Bilyones.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the 1st District of Capis votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Biron.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the 4th District of the Province of Ilo-Ilo, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Bolilia.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the 4th District of Batangas votes yes for the election of Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress.
Bondok.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the 4th District of Pampanga, we are honored to vote for our cabalin, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as the Speaker of the House. Salamat po.
Bongalon.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from Ako Bicol Partilis votes for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Bordado. Bosita. Briones.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Agap Partilis, I vote for Honorable Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Brosas.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from Gabriela Partilis abstains.
Buain.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 1st District of Batangas, it is my honor and privilege to vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress.
Bulut Bektang.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the 1st District of Apayo, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Bustos.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Patro Partilis, I vote for Representative Romualdes.
Cabredo.
On behalf of the, Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 3rd District of Albay, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for Speaker.
Cagas. Kahayon Uy.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Caloocan City, this representation is voting for Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes to be the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Cagas.
May I'm buntag, Mr. Speaker. May I'm buntag usap sa among pinanggang base presidente, Mayor Sara Duterte. Magwapakayo. In behalf of the 1st District of Lanau del Sur, among garbo nga mubutar kang Speaker Martin Romualdes. May I'm buntag ganatong tanan.
Calderon.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as representative of the 7th District of Cebu, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you, Mr. Presiding.
Calixto.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 1st District of Pasay, I vote for Martin Romualdes as the 19th Congress Speaker.
Campos.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Romualdes Speaker.
Kawagdan.
Romualdes.
Cardema.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Kari.
Good morning, everybody. From the 5th District of Leite, we are very much excited na 'yung magiging sunod na Speaker is from Leite. We are, and I am voting for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Dagand kayong salamat.
Castro Franz.
I abstain, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Castro Jane.
Jane Tan Castro, 2nd District of Capis. I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives, 19th Congress. Thank you.
Celeste.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House. Thank you.
John.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the lone representative of Lapulapo City, we vote aye for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Chato.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the 1st Congressional District of the Province of Bohol, allow me to manifest our very, very strong support to the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. We give our full trust and confidence in the leadership of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. I know him not only in Congress and his zeal for public service, but likewise in our youth leadership days, years, years back. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chua.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the 3rd District of the City of Manila, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Tsungalao.
Mr. Speaker, the people of Pico has spoken. They are longing to support. They shall be safe in their vote. Therefore, I vote for Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Co Angelica Natasha.
As the representative of the BHW Partilis, my vote goes to Honorable Congressman Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Co Elizaldi.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the president of Partilis Coalition and representative of Ako Bicol Partilis, votes for the future of our country, my vote is for Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Thank you.
Co Pilar.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 6th District of Keston City, it's an honor and privilege to vote Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Kowanko Jaime.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Terlak, it's my honor to vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Kowanko Mort.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representative from District 2 of Pangasinan votes for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of this House.
Colada. Coliantes.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the 3rd District of Batangas, composed of 10 municipalities and two cities, namely Santo Tomas and Tanawan, votes for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Corvera.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the people of the 2nd District of Agusan del Norte, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress. Thank you very much.
Cruz Ambrosio.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the representative of the new 5th District of Bulakan, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Cruz Ricardo.
Mr. Presiding Officer, bilang kinatawan po ng unang distrito ng Tagig at Pateros, ang boto ko po ay para kay Speaker Romualdes.
Kuwa. Koresma.
Naimbag na bigat apo. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Presiding Officer, as representative of the 1st District of Nueva Biscaya, I'm honored and privileged to vote for Kong Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress, of the 19th Congress. Agyamanakapo.
Dagoop. Dalipe.
2nd District of Sanbongga City votes for Representative Romualdes.
Dalog.
Mr. Presiding Officer, gawisa agaw ta kwamin. As a representative of the 1st District of Mountain Prabang,
as a representative of the lone district of Mountain Province, our vote is for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Dayang Hirang.
Mister Speaker, in behalf of the people of the 1st District of Abauriyan Tal, yes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Daza. Jesus. De Venesia.
Towards a creative and sustainable future and in behalf of Explore PD4 or the 4th District of Pangasinan, my vote for Speaker goes to the President of our party, La Cas C M D, of which our beloved VP Maminday Sara is Chair, a public servant of proven track record, my boss of 3 years, a man of whom I am so proud, Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Defensor.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Iliilo, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Delmar.
On behalf of the City of Cebu 1st District, Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House for 19th Congress.
De Los Santos.
Ang probinsiyano partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Dimaporo Muhammad Kalid.
Salam alaikum warakmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Presiding Officer and dear colleagues, on behalf of the 1st District of Lanau del Norte, I vote for our incoming Speaker, Martin Romualdes.
Dimaporo City Amina.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Lanau del Norte, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker.
Dionisio.
Your Honor, in behalf of the 1st District of the City of Manila, it is a pleasure and an honor to vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker. Thank you.
Domingo.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of the Province of Bulacan, it is my honor and privilege to vote for our new Speaker, Congressman Ferdinand T. Romualdes. Thank you.
Duavit.
Your Honor, with absolute confidence, the people of the 1st District of Rizal cast its vote for the honorable Martin Romualdes.
Duhalii.
Mayong Uto, Mister Presiding Officer. Mayong Uto, Vice President Inday Sara Duterte. In behalf of the 2nd District of Davao del Norte, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our Speaker of 19th Congress.
Duterte.
Mayingad laos atanan para sa distrito uno sa syudad sa Davao, Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Di Faustino Ino.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 6th District of Isabela, we'd like to cast our vote for no other than Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Di Faustino Michael.
The 5th District of Isabela choose Martin Romualdes for Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Di Ian Paul.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Isabela, we cast our vote for our next Speaker, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ecleyo.
Mister Presiding Officer, lone district of Dinagat Islands votes for my boss, Congressman Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Emano.
Mayong buntag, Mister Presiding Officer. Mayong buntag, VP Sara. Ang katauhan sa kadoang distrito sa Lalawigan sa misami Zoriental will vote for, of course, Chairman Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Enciso. Enverga.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 1st District of Quezon Province votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Escudero.
On behalf of the 1st District of Sorcegon, I vote yes for Mister Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Espares. Espina.
On behalf of the lone district of Biliran, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for our next Speaker.
Estrella.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the Abono Partilis votes Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Yudella. Farinias.
Mister Presiding Officer, as represent of probinsiyano ako partilis, uh, we vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Fernandez. Ferrer Antonio.
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, um, Congressman Martin Romualdes is my Speaker and I, uh, my vote is for him.
Ferrer Antonio.
On behalf District of Cavite, we vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Ferrer Juliet Marie.
On behalf of the 4th District of Negroes Occidental, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker.
Flores.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Pukinon, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Fortes.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 2nd District of the Province of Sorcegon cast its vote for the Speaker in the 19th Congress in favor of the honorable Martin Romualdes. Thank you very much.
Frasco.
Mayong buntag, Mister Presiding Officer. Mayong buntag, VP Inday Sara Duterte. Representing the 5th District of Cebu, I proudly vote for the gentleman from the 1st Legislative District of Leyte, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Prisnedi.
As a representative of the lone district of the City of Montelupa, Mister Presiding Officer, sir.
Yes, sir, sir, sir.
As a representative of the lone district of the City of Montelupa, my vote is for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Fuentebelia.
On behalf of the people of the 4th District of Cabarinisur, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Thank you.
Galeos.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Cebu, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as the new Speaker of the 19th Congress. Dagang salamat.
Garcia Albert.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 2nd District of Bataan through this representation votes for the honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Garcia Dante.
Mister Presiding Officer, being a representative of the 2nd District of La Union, my vote goes to Honorable Romualdes.
Garcia Jose Arturo.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 3rd District of Rizal, uh, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for the next Speaker. Thank you.
Garcia Maria Angela.
Mister Presiding Officer, this humble representation from the 3rd District of Bataan votes for his honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Garcia Pablo John.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 3rd District of the Province of Cebu, I have the honor to vote for my fellow neophyte in the 14th Congress, contemporary in the UP College of Law and a friend of the family, the next Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Vincent.
Good afternoon. I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Gardiola.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the CWS Partelis, my vote is for my boss, Congressman Honorable Martin Romualdes.
Garin.
Mister Presiding Officer, yours truly grew up in the province of Leyte together with the honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. I saw him honed into what I call "one of the perfect gentlemen". And when I entered politics in the other side of the Visayas, in the western part, I can see a colleague in the eastern part of the Visayas who is not only a gentleman in nature, but a pure leader with a heart ready to shepherd the House of Representatives. With the voice of the first to be the voice of the people from the 1st Congressional District of Iliilo, Mister Presiding Officer, our vote goes for the honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker. Thank you.
Gassetaya.
Mayong utu, Mister Speaker or Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of Macalon City, ang boto po namin ay para kay Congressman Martin Romualdes para sa susunod na Speaker ng 19th Congress. Maraming salamat po.
Gachalian. Romualdes. Gato.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the lone district of Batanes, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Go Ed Christopher.
Bilang representante ng galawang distrito ng Isabela, ang boto ko po ay para kay Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Go Mark.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of Baguio City, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Goles.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Malasakit at Bayan Ian Partilis, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Gomez.
Mayong utu sa tanan na ton ng mga ikuon as the representative of the good and beautiful people of the 4th District of Leyte. It is my pride and honor to nominate a true-blooded Leytenyo, a person of integrity, a true gentleman who I know can move this House, move forward together. With full trust and confidence, I proudly vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of this August Chamber.
Gonzaga.
2nd District Davao de Oro, yes for Speaker Romualdes.
Gonzalez Aurelio.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Baka mabigla kayo, tawagan ko si Speaker Jake. Alam niyo, 14 Congress, magkaibigan na kami niyan. And of course, palakpapak po natin si Ma'am Juliet, Bang Juliet. Palakpapak po natin, mother of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Palakpapak po natin ang aking kababayan. On behalf of the 3rd District of Ampanga, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Gonzalez Neptali.
Yes na yes, Romualdes.
Gonzalez Sandro.
Mayong adlaw sa tanan. Mayong adlaw to our Vice President VP Inday Sara Duterte. In behalf of Marino Partilis, I vote for the honorable Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Goriseta.
Mister Presiding Officer, uh, on behalf of the people of the 2nd District of Iliilo, I vote for a man of dignity, a dedicated leader, and, uh, the next Speaker of the 19th Congress, Congressman Martin G. Romualdes.
Guiko.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 5th District of Pangasinan, I vote yes to our President of La Cas, uh, Ferdinand, Congressman Ferdinand, uh, Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Ginto.
Kaysa ang mga nagtiwala sa pinuno partilis, aming ipinagkakatiwala ang suporta namin sa pamumuno ng kinatawan Martin Romualdes bilang pinuno o Speaker ng kapulungan ng mga kinatawan ng Pilipinas. Thank you.
Gulyas.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 1st District of Cebu proudly votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Gutierrez. Hagedorn.
Mister Presiding Officer, Madam Vice President Sara Duterte, sa alam po ng 3rd
sa alam po ng 3rd District ng Palawan, na binubuo po ng Port of Princess City at ng Borlan, yes na yes rin po ang bota namin para kay Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Mabuhay po kayo pagpalagay ng panginoon.
Jaresco.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Aklan, to include Boracay, it is my honor and joy to vote for a man who has the humility to listen to all, a clarity of intellect, and the courage to daily attend the 18th Congress, navigate vital bills like Bayanihan 1 and Bayanihan 2 and other bills in our war against COVID. This is, this great leader, this person is no other than Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. For the next Speaker, the next six years, Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Aklan, to include Boracay.
Bataman. Hernandez Alcantara.
Good day. As a representative of the great Lone District of Calamba, I vote for Honorable Representative Martin Romualdes as the next House Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Pereira. Oribata.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of 1st District of Caballerosur, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes to be the next Speaker of 19th Congress. Thank you.
Javier.
Mau paina utto haatong tanan. The 2nd District of Leyte votes for our beloved 1st District of Leyte representative, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress. Dami mga salamat.
Co Olga Ara.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of Masbate, I cast my vote in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Co Ricardo.
Mr. Presi... Mr. Presiding Officer, representing the 1st District of Masbate, I vote for Congressman Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House.
Co Wilton.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the 3rd District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Conghun.
Magbibigay galang po sa ating Visipresidente, Mayor Inday Sara Duterte. Bilang representant... Bilang representante ng unang distrito ng Sambales, buong pagmamalaki ko pong ibinuboto si Congressman Martin Romualdes upang maging ganap na Speaker ng mababang kapulungan. Mabuhay po ang kongreso, mabuhay po kayo, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Labad-labad.
Please proceed, ma'am. Your Honor, we cannot hear you. Honorable Labad-Labad is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of my constituent Legislative District of San Buanga del Norte, I respectfully vote for the Honorable Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Lacson. Lacson Noel.
The Lone District of Malabuan votes for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress.
Lagman.
Mr. Presiding Officer, being with the authentic political opposition, I am constrained to vote no.
Lagon Daphne.
Mayong utto kanatong tanan. From 6th District Cebu Province, I will vote Congressman Martin Romualdes as our new Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Lagon Sunny.
Mayong utto sa tanan. In behalf of Aku Visaya Partylist, I vote yes for the Honorable Congressman Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House. Dagan salamat.
Lara.
Mayimbaga aldao kanyate omi apo. Mr. Speaker, yo votos na 3rd distrito ng Kageyan para Speaker of the House of Representatives. Para sa tuloy-tuloy po ng kaunlaran ng Provincia ng Kageyan, awan tanakuan uzi, is Speaker ku, Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Mabalat.
Lazatin. In behalf of the 1st District of Ampanga, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Lee.
The Honorable Lee is recognized.
Legarda.
Mayadad lawan, Mr. Dep... Presiding Officer, on behalf of my fellow Antekenios, as a Lone District representative of our province, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our new next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Libanan. Lim Kaychong.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the Negro's, 1st District of Negro Suriantal concurs with the majority member and votes yes for Speaker, Congressman Romualdes, Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Loyola.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 5th District of Cabite, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Luistro.
For the people of Batangas 2nd District, this representation extends courtesy to the Vice President, Her Excellency Inday Sara Duterte. For the speakership, this representation is honored and privileged to cast her very first vote for the Honorable Representative of Leyte, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Lumayag.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. For the 1st District of South Cotabato, Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of 19th Congress.
Makapagalaroyo.
I vote yes for Martin Romualdes for Speaker.
Maceda.
Mr. Speaker, this humble representation from the 4th District of Manila gives his full, unequivocal, and unwavering support for my colleague Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Madrona.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Romblon votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Magsino. Malapitan.
Mr. Presiding.
Kay Congressman Romualdes po, Speaker Romualdes po, diya, 19th Congress.
Honorable Magsino is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, magandang tanghali po Vice President Inday Sara Duterte. To my colleagues, bilang representante po ng OFW Partylist, I abstain.
Mangawang.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people Lone District of the Province of Kalinga, our vote is for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Thank you so much.
Maniquez.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd Legislative District of Sambales, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes. Thank you po.
Manuel.
Good morning, Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. This representation from Kabataan Partylist abstains from voting.
Maranyon.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice President. The 2nd District of Negro Occidental votes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Marco Leta.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Sagip Partylist, this representation votes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Marcos.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the 1st District of Ilocos Norte, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Mariano Hernandez.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of Laguna, which consists of the City of Cabuyao and the municipalities of Los Palmas and Baite, I vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Mourinho.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes is the best. I vote for the best. Please count my vote.
Mquez.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the 1st District of the Province of Aklan, I vote yes for Congressman Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Martinez.
Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Mastura.
Asalamualaikum, warak matulaki talawa barakatuho. Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 1st District of Magindanaw with Cotabato City, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Naniniwala po kami na sa Speaker Romualdes ay magiging huwaran, matapat, at mabuting leader ng ating kamara. Kaya po, ibinibigay namin, ang suportan namin sa kanya at sa kanyang mga adhikaen ngayong ikalabing siyam na kongreso. Shukran en wasalam.
Matibag.
Mr. Presiding Officer, representing the 1st District of the Province of Laguna, the City of San Pedro, it is my greatest honor to say that our vote for speakership in the 19th Congress is of course for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Matugas.
Maradjaw na utto sa tanan. Para sa 1st District of Surigo del Norte, Sierra Gawaillan, ang amo boto para an Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Mendoza.
May I would to, Mr. Speaker. Para sa mga manggagawang Pilipino, mamumuo, palyog lang, papasa tayo na batas para sa kanila, Mr. Speaker. TUCP for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Tagang salamat.
Mercado.
The 1st District of Southern Leyte is very proud to vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Mercado Revilla.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Cabite, I vote for the President of Lacas, MD Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives this 19th Congress. Salamat po.
Miguel.
Yukifu, magandang tanghali. This representation for the 2nd District of South Cotabato votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Momo.
Brother Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Province of Surigo del Sur 1st District, I will vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Morden.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Banti Pangasinan Ilukana Partylist, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Nava.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the Lone District of Ibaras votes for the Honorable Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress.
Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
Nisa.
I, the Lone Puso Pinoy Party List representative, do hereby vote Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes to be the Speaker of the House of the Representative of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Nograres Juan Fidel Felipe.
I vote for Representative Romualdes as her next House Speaker.
Noel. Nograres Margarita Ignacia.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to our Vice President, Vice President Inday Sara Duterte. On behalf of PBA Partilist, this representation votes for Honorable Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Nolasco.
Your Honor, on behalf of the people of the 1st District of Cagayan, I hereby vote for the honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
O'Aminal.
Mr. Speaker, the people of the 2nd District of Misamis Occidental, whom I serve, are confident that we can reach great heights and achieve monumental milestones under the leadership of the good gentleman from Leyte. Thus, I vote for the honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House.
Olaso.
Buenos dias at todos, Señor Posenario del cámara 19. Antes de todo, quiero saludar, darle mi amor con el daton Vice Presidente Inday Sara Duterte. Este representante particularmente del Distrito Uno del mi abable ciudad de San Buanga, mi voto, saludo y respeto para con honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes Jr. Muchas gracias y buenos dias.
Olivares.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this humble representation of the 1st District of the city of Paranyake, I'm casting my vote yes for Congressman Representative Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of this 19th Congress. Thank you.
Ongchuan. Ordones.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer, to our Vice President Inday Sara. In behalf of the more than 12 million senior citizens, I vote for boss madyo Congressman Martin Romualdes as our new Speaker. Thank you.
Ortega.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Tinagan ti primeiro distrito ti La Union, this humble representation would like to cast his vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
O'Anodison.
Mayong utu sa tanan, Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the Lone District of Mandawe, province of Cebu, I vote for the honorable Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Taghang salamat.
Padearnos.
On behalf of Galingsapuso Party List, I will vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for the speakership of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Paduano. Paglas.
Bismillah, Rachman, Rahim. Asalamualaikum warakmatulahi talawa barakatuho. As speaker sa ating mahal na Vice President Mira Sara Duterte, sangalan po ng 2nd Distrito ng Magindanao, with trust and confidence to the leadership of our incoming Speaker, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, we cast our votes with the trust and confidence dahil po alam namin isa po kayo sa makakatulong sa amin sa maging problema namin sa aming provinsya. Wasalamualaikum warakmatulahi talawa barakatuho.
Palma.
On behalf of the 1st District of San Buanga Cebugai, our vote is for Congressman FMR Romualdes as the next Speaker.
Panaligan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the 1st District of Oriental Mindoro casts its vote for the person most eminently qualified to lead this chamber as Speaker, a veteran legislator, a person with a mastery of the parliamentary process, and the president of our party Lacasey MD, the honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you.
Pancho.
In behalf of the 2nd District of Bulacan, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress of the House of Representatives.
Panotes.
In behalf of the 2nd District of Camarines Norte, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Pascual.
Sangalan ng mga tao, sa ika-4 distrito ng Lalawigan ng Naipeisiha, ang aking napakahalaga at manal na boto ay buong karangalan akong ibinibigay kay Ginoong Martin Romualdes. Bilang susunod na tagapagsalita ng kapulungan ng mga kinatawan sa Pilipinas ng ikalabing siyam na kongreso, maraming salamat po.
Pena.
Congressman Martin Romualdes, Speaker.
Pimentel.
On behalf of the 2nd District of the province of Surigo del Sur, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Plaza.
As representative of the 2nd District of the province of Agusan del Sur, I vote yes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker of the House.
Plato.
Imbagga malimyo po, magandang hapon din po sa ating ginagalang at minamahal na pangalawang pangulo, Inday Sara Duterte. Sangalan po ng ikaanim na distrito ng Bulacan, bagong-bago pong distrito, kami po ay sumusuporta kay kinatawan Martin Romualdes sa pagka tagapagsalita ng kapulungan, mababang kapulungan ng Pilipinas. Justagina po.
Princia sagabas.
Naimbaga, aldaw tayo amin. Madam Vice President Sara Duterte, Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 6th District of Pangasinan, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 19th Congress.
Umarin.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 3rd District of Quezon City, vote a resounding yes to my future mentor, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Uno.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the people of the 1st District of Antipolo, vote for Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Kimbo.
Mr. Presiding Officer, ang boto ng ikalawang distrito na Maritina City ay para kay Attorney Martin Romualdes.
Rama.
Mayong utu sa tanan, on behalf of the 2nd District, the city of Cebu, my vote goes to Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Rekto.
I vote yes for Martin Romualdes.
Rehencia.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. In behalf of the constituents of Iligan City, I vote yes to Representative Ferdinand Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you po.
Revilla Bryan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Agimat Partilist, I would like to vote for Martin Romualdes for Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Revilla Ramon.
Mr. Presiding Officer, sangalan po ng unang distrito ng Lalawigan ng Cabite, ang boto po namin ay para sa susunod na Speaker, Martin Romualdes.
Reyes.
Yes, Representative Ray Florence Reyes of Panakalusugan Partilist, we vote in favor of the speakership of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Rilio.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 4th District of Quezon City, it is an honor for me to vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Rivera.
On behalf of Telestic of Tarlac, I vote Congressman Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Robes.
Sangalan po ng lungsod ng San Saadalmonti Bulacan, kami po ay para sa ating speaker at kaibigan Congressman Martin Romualdes. Salamat po.
Rodriguez Yulojio.
In behalf of the Lone District of Catanduanes, I vote Congressman Martin Romualdes as a Speaker of the 19th Congress and also the kabobain of my mother. Thank you.
Rodriguez Rufus.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the 2nd District of Cagayan di Oro, the city of golden friendship, the land of the best whitewater rafting in the world, and in the presence of her honor, the Vice President of the Republic of the Philippines, Inday Sara Duterte, the people of the 2nd District of Cagayan di Oro cast its vote to a leader who will serve with the highest degree of responsibility, integrity, loyalty, and efficiency as enshrined in the 1987 Constitution. We cast our vote to the honorable Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Roman.
Ginoong tagapamuno, sangalan po ng unang distrito ng Bataan, ang aking boto ay walang iba para sa isang taong nagmamayari na mga katangian ng isang mabuting tinuno ng mababang kapulungan, ang kasipagan at katyagaan sa gitna ng maraming trabaho, ang kababaang loob sa gitna po ng napakalaking kapangyarihan at higit sa lahat ang pagmamahal sa ating bayan. Walang iba kundi ang taong matagal po ng sinusuportahan walang iba kundi si Ginoong Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Maraming salamat po.
Romero.
Madam Vice President Inday Sara, good afternoon. In behalf of the One Pacman Partilist, I throw my full support and vote to my good friend Representative Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Romualdes Ferdinand Martin. Romualdes Yedamari.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as a representative of Lingop Partilist, my vote is for Romualdes.
Romualdo.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. In behalf of the Lone District of the province of Camigin, my vote is for our Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. And also, Mr. Presiding Officer, I would like to thank our incoming Speaker for the mentor of my son, former Congressman, ex-J-Romualdo, now the Governor of the province of Camigin. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Romulo.
Mr. Presiding Officer, having known Representative Martin Romualdes since our UP Law days, being his classmate since the 14th Congress, knowing the person who he is as representative of the Lone District of Pasig City, I vote Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Roque.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the 4th District of the province of Bukidnon, we cast our vote, no, I cast my vote, to the new Speaker of the House, Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Sackdalan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 1st District of North Cotabato, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Sagarberia.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District, province of Negros Oriental, I vote Martin Romualdes for Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Sakaluran.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Vice President Inday Sara Duterte, and to all my dear colleagues, good afternoon. My vote is yes to our boss, the next Speaker of the House, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Celceda.
Our beloved Vice President Sara Duterte, dati pa sana, ngayon natupad na, destino ng Pilipinas ang progreso, destino ni Martin ang pagiging Speaker. My vote is for Romualdes.
Sali.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum wr wb. Talaw barakat. Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of Tawi Tawi, as a representative of the Lone District, province of Tawi Tawi, my vote is a big yes for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes to be the Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress. Thank you very much.
Salimbangon.
May unto satinan, in behalf of the 4th District of Cebu, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House in the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Salo.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Madam Vice President Indaisara Duterte, ang kinatawan pong ito ay tuloy-tuloy ang suporta kay Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes sapagka tayo nainiwala sa kanyang pagkatao at prinsipyo. Kung kaya't ikinagagalak ko at kenararangal na iboto para sa Kabayan Partilis, mula sa Kabayan Partilis, si Congressman Romualdes bilang Speaker ng 19th Congress. Grabe salamat po.
Salvami.
Mayad na po sa tanan, para sa unang distrito iyang palawan, I vote for Martin Romualdes. Matamang salamat po.
Santos.
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Speaker. On behalf of the Cotabatenios of the 3rd District of Cotabato, I vote and support Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 19th Congress. Maraming salamat.
Solub.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer. As Kalinya Partilis representative, I vote for Honorable Representative Martin Romualdes as House Speaker in this 19th Congress. Thank you.
Silverio.
Sa ngalan po ng mga mamayan ng ikatlong distrito ng Bulakan, karangalan ko po na iboto bilang Speaker ng ikalabinsiyam na kongreso ang iginagalang na kinatawan ng unang distrito ng Leite, Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Maraming salamat po.
Sinson Rachel.
As the representative of Ako Ilocano Ako Partilis, we, the Ilocanos, vote in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Sinson Ronald.
As representative of the 1st District of Ilocosur, I proudly vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress.
Sinson Mihen.
In behalf of the 2nd District of Ilocosur, we vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as House Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Solon.
From the province of Salangani Province, we vote for the speakership of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Soriano. Suwan.
On behalf of the 1st District of Cagayan di Oro City, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Suansing Horacio.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of Sultan Coderat, I cast my vote to the honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Suansing Michaela.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 1st District of Nueva Isija, it is my honor to cast my vote for the honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Suarez.
Mr. Presiding Officer, before I cast my vote, let me be first to congratulate our incoming Speaker Martin Romualdes. The 2nd District of Quezon Province votes for Martin Romualdes to be our Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Saliado.
And we have the people of Camarines Norte 1st District, I cast my vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as our new Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Tamayo.
On behalf of Angat Partilis, Mr. Presiding Officer, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tambunting.
The 2nd District of the city of Parenyaque votes for Representative Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Tan Joseph.
Sir Presiding Officer, from the 4th District of Isabela, I vote yes for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Tan Keith.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the 4th District of Quezon Province votes for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Tan Michael Reynolds. Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James. Tan Tambut.
On behalf of Kusug Tausug Partilis, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Tan Chai.
On behalf of Sagip Partilis, this representation votes for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Tan Watko.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of Lusal, our vote goes to the next Speaker, Martin Romualdes.
Toriella.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Lone District of Occidental Mindoro, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the new Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Teodoro.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Marikina City, I vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Davis Arnolfo.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the 3rd District of Negroes Oriental, my vote goes to Congressman Romualdes.
Davis Jose.
Mr. Presiding Officer, italino at galing ng Pilipino, TGP Partilis, through this representation, votes for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives this 19th Congress. Ang inyong pamumulo bilang Speaker ay tunay na sumasalaming sa talino at galing ng Pilipino.
Pianco.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the Lone District of Nevotas, it is my honor to vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Tieng.
The 5th District of Manila supports and votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Tolentino.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Cavitenios from the 8th District of Cavite, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Tulfo Jocelyn. Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the people of the 2nd District of Quezon City votes for our new Speaker, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tupas. Titor.
Mr. Presiding Officer, maadong utog gikan sa 3ro distrito sa Pobinsya sa Bohol. Sa akong mga katauhan, ang among vote para ni Congressman Martin Romualdes. Daghang salamat.
Ti.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of LPGMA Partilis, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Umalí.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Oriental Mindoro, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Unabia.
Mr. Presiding Officer, representing the 1st District of Misamis Oriental, my vote is for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of 19th Congress. Thank you.
Ungab.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as I have already seconded the nomination of the Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives, let me reiterate my vote and the vote of my district, the 3rd District of the Bauchi that we are voting, that I am voting for the Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Valeriano.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of 2nd District of Manila, it is my honor to vote Representative Martin Romualdes.
Valmayor.
May hapon satinan, may hapon Madam Vice President. Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 1st District of Negroes Occidental, we vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for our Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Vargas.
The 5th Legislative District of Quezon City votes for the speakership of the Honorable Martin Romualdes.
Vargas Alfonso.
I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker.
Velasco.
Mr. Presiding Officer, to our beloved Vice President Indaisara Duterte Carpio, in behalf of the Lone District of Marin Duque, it is my honor to vote as Speaker for the 19th Congress of the House of Representatives, our hard-working and staunch partner in serving the Filipino people, a good friend, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Veloso Toazon.
Maupay nga unto satinan, Vice President Indaisara, Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 3rd District of Leite, it is my distinct honor to vote for our fellow Leiteno, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Vergara. Versosa.
Mr. Speaker, isa pong karangalan sa amin sa tutuktuin Partilis, na suporta ng liderato ng aming kaibigan, na kasama sa hirap, makakasama sa pagbabago, sa pagtulong at sa pagbigay ng pag-asa, ang aming Speaker, Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Villia.
Vice President Indaisara Duterte, mayong hapon, good afternoon. Mr. Presiding Officer, representing Lone District of Siquehor, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress.
Villia Fuerte Luis. Raymond.
Magandang umaga sa inyong lahat, Diyos maray na aldaw. Ang boto ko po ay solid buo, walang kaduda-duda para kay Speaker Martin Romualdes. Salamat po.
Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis.
Good morning to all, Diyos maray na ramrag, kanin yong amin. On behalf of the Rinconada area, province of Camarinesur, I would like to vote Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Maraming salamat po.
Villianueva.
Mr. Speaker, sa pag-asa mapabili isang pagbangon at pagulad ang ating minamahal na bansang Pilipinas at sa makulay na outstanding performance ng majority of the 18th Congress. Sa pangalan po ng citizens' battle against corruption, also known as Cibak Partilis, I am releasing my resounding yes vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes to be the Speaker of the House of Representatives 19th Congress. Thank you, and God bless you more, Speaker, Mr. Speaker, and God bless the 19th Congress and our beloved country, the Philippines. Thank you.
Villar.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as a representative of the Lone District of Laspenias City, it is my distinct honor and privilege to vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Villiaraza Suarez.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Alona Partilis, my vote for the next Speaker of the House is my ninong Martin Romualdes.
Villiarica.
On behalf of the 4th District of Bulakan, I am honored to vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Violago.
Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat, Mr. Presiding Officer. Ang pangalawang distrito ng Nueva Isija ay para kay Representative Martin Romualdes bilang Speaker ng 19th Congress. bilang Speaker ng 19th Congress.
Yup. Christian Tel.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of the Province of Tarlac, we vote, I vote for Congressman Martin Romaldes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Officer.
Please receive the honorable ang. Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, to our Vice President Indaisara. Honorable sir. Uh, honorable ang is sila on the line. Not a more sara. Uh, this representation from Manila Teachers Partilis votes yes for the speakership of Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romaldes. Congratulations, sir. Honorable Jojo Ang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. As Representative of Oswaldo Longo Partilis, I vote for my good friend, a loyal friend, Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as House Speaker for this 19th Congress. Salamat kag mainoswagun na adlaw sa atuntanan. Congratulation, Mr. Speaker Martin.
Yudela.
Please receive your honor.
Maayong utu ka na atuntanan. On behalf of Sican District, we'll give our full support and solid yes vote to the speakership of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Lee. Romaldes Ferdinand Martin. Romaldes. Pan Samir. Pan Stephen. Tulfo Jocelyn. Tupas.
On behalf of the people of the 5th District of Iloilo, it is my honor to vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of 19th Congress. Salamat po.
Abalos. Burdado. Bosita. Colada. Dago. Daza. Jesus. Enciso. Espares. Gutierrez. Ataman. Herrera. Libanan. Nubel. Ongchuan. Aduano. Soriano. Pan Reynolds. Vergara.
Four members abstaining from the vote, 22 members who did not vote, and one negative vote. The results of the voting show that, representing from the 1st District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes garnered 283 votes. With 283 votes, the Chair declares a gentleman from the 1st District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes, as a junior Speaker of the House of Representatives. Officer, I move that the committee of five members, composo, Representative Isidro Tiungab, Representative Roberto B. Puno, Representative Camille A. Villar, Representative Christine Singson Mihang, and Representative Raymond Democritos Mendoza, be constituted to notify the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes of his election as Speaker of the House of Representatives and thereafter to escort the Speaker-elect to the Rose Room for the oath-taking rites. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The notification committee is hereby constituted. The members of the House who are named are hereby appointed to the notification committee and they're requested to inform the Speaker-elect, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes, of his election and to escort him to the Rose Room. The Chair invites the family of the Speaker-elect, Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos and the Vice President of the Republic of Philippines, Her Excellency Sara Zivermando Duterte, to join him at the Rose Room as he takes oath of office. Chair's motion is suspended.
Honorable members of the House of Representatives, the duly-elected Speaker of the House of Representatives, the gentleman from the 1st District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
The Honorable Jaime de Cuango, of the 1st District of Tarlac, will administer the oath of office to the Speaker-elect. The Honorable Jaime de Cuango is requested to come to the Rose Room and administer the oath of office to the Speaker.
May I request all the members of the House to rise.
Of Leyte, of the first district of Leyte, having been elected Speaker of the House of Representatives, having been elected Speaker of the House of Representatives, hereby solemnly swear, hereby solemnly swear, that I will well and faithfully discharge, I will well and faithfully discharge, to the best of my ability, to the best of my abilities, the duties of my present position, the duties of my present position, and of all others, and of all others, I may hereafter hold, I may hereafter hold, under the Republic of the Philippines, under the Republic of the Philippines, that I will support and defend, that I shall support and defend, the Constitution of the Philippines, the Constitution of the Philippines, that I will bear true faith, that I will bear true faith, and allegiance, and allegiance, to the same, to the same, and that I will obey the laws and legal orders, that I will obey the laws and legal orders, and decrees promulgated, and the decrees promulgated, by the duly constituted authorities, by the duly constituted authorities, of the Republic of the Philippines, of the Republic of the Philippines, and that I impose this obligation, that I impose this obligation, upon myself voluntarily, upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation, without mental reservation, or purpose of evasion, or purpose of evasion, so help me God, so help me God, congratulations.
To our colleagues in the house to kindly sit down.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is the afternoon already, so I shall not hurry. Ladies and gentlemen, the members of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress, I'd like very much to extend my thanks, first of all, to the President of the Republic of the Philippines, Ferdinand "Bongong" Romoldes Marcos Jr. for having espoused the message of unity and for supporting the House of Representatives, its leadership and the legislative agenda that we shall forge ahead. I'm deeply grateful for the presence of the Vice President, Vice President and Secretary of Education, Inday Sara Dutterte. I, of course, would like to extend my thanks to my family, my mother who is here, thank you so much, and the rest of my family, my brother, my sister-in-law, my children. Thank you for the support and the sacrifices and, of course, mostly to my wife, Congresswoman Yedda. You're my inspiration. Most of all, of course, to all our friends here who made it very, very possible for me to be up here. I'd like to, of course, thank my immediate past predecessor, Speaker Lord Alan J. Velasco. Beyond the legislative agenda that we had accomplished together, he's too responsible for the refurbishment and the most beautiful session hall that we have today. So, thank you, Speaker, and, of course, to our Secretary General and the staff who've gotten this all together. I'd like to also thank one and all for your unequivocal support for our leadership for the 19th Congress. I accept the position, I ask you all to accept the duty of service to the people. We do this all together as a team, as we had in the previous Congress, and in unity, as they say, there is strength. Words for the trust and confidence you repose upon me, which members of the chamber, your in-qualified support has overwhelmed me, and it is with high hopes that together we shall hurdle the challenges that we face at this stage of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are entering the endemic stages and we are confident that with the unity that our president has espoused, we can actually overcome the crippling effects of this pandemic and, of course, the political differences that occurred in the recent elections as well as the global impacts such as the Ukrainian war. The tasks ahead of us may seemingly be daunting, but our synergy is the seed that will nurture us for the ensuing years. We will work together to ensure that the House of Representatives truly embodies the will of the people. We will work hand in hand to ensure the swift path passage of House measures that are needed by the people and would support development across all sectors of society at different levels of government and with unity of purpose, there is nothing that we cannot do. I vow to attend to all the concerns of your constituents. I shall try to be as fair as possible and to favor no one. There will be a fair and equitable distribution of resources for the development of our regions regardless of political affiliations. Every Filipino family must be included in any developmental agenda. No one gets left behind. Always open, available to all. You, the members of the House, for we are the House of the people, the majority and the minority. Priority will be given to those willing to share their aspirations with all those constituents with me. And thank you, my dear colleagues, for the honor for choosing me to serve as your Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress. I gladly accept your trust and confidence with a promise that we will collectively work to make the 19th Congress the best it can possibly be.
Mr. Speaker, it's on of the 18th Congress rules of the House of Representatives as amended, as the provisional rules of the House to govern its proceedings until the adoption of the rules of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress.
Is it an ejection? The Chair hears none. The rules of the 18th Congress as amended is hereby adopted as provisional rules for the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the oath of the members of the House of Representatives.
And repeat after me. I state your name of having been elected to the position of Representative.
Having been elected to the position of Representative.
Hereby solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities, the duties of my present position and all others that I may hold hereafter under the Republic of the Philippines, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I will obey the laws, legal orders and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines. Ejection? Upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion, so help me God. Congratulations. Welcome to the 19th Congress.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the election of the Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The election of Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives is now in order. Acting floor leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we elect Representative Gloria Macapagal Arroyo as the senior deputy speaker and the following members as deputy speakers of the House of Representatives. Representative Isidro Tiungab, Representative Roberto Vipuno, Representative Camille A. Villar, Representative Christine Sinson Mihang and Representative Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Representative Gloria Macapagal Arroyo is unanimously elected as the senior deputy speaker and the Honorable Representatives Isidro Tiungab, Roberto Vipuno, Camille A. Villar, Christine Sinson Mihang and Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza are unanimously elected as deputy speakers of the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the election of the Secretary General.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The election of the Secretary General is now in order.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we elect Mr. Reginald S. Velasco as Secretary General of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Mr. Reginald S. Velasco is unanimously elected as Secretary General of the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the election of the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The election of the Sergeant-at-Arms is now in order.
I move that we elect Police Major General Napoleon Caballes Taas, retired as Sergeant-at-Arms of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Police Major General Napoleon Caballes Taas, retired, is unanimously elected as a Sergeant-at-Arms of the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Representative from the second district of Cavite, the Honorable Lani Mercado Revilla.
It's August Chamber. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I stand before you today to nominate the Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe as Majority Floor Leader of the House of Representatives. The role of the Majority Leader is crucial in the proper and efficient legislative operation. The Majority Leader serves as the Speaker's Chief Lieutenant or Field Commander. He is in charge of directing the deliberations on the floor and melding the diverse philosophies, viewpoints and agenda of all the members of the House. And while scheduling the House's business is a collective activity, the Majority Leader has a large part in shaping the House's overall agenda and in strategically determining when or in what order should a legislative measure be introduced and deliberated on towards its enactment into law. The person I am nominating today as our new Majority Leader possesses a great ability, skill, knowledge, legislative prowess and mastery of the legislative mill. As we face the challenges of the 19th Congress, there is no better person who can lead us as our Majority Leader than Honorable Manix Dalipe. A man with proven leadership and integrity. A man who believes in change through cooperation and mutual understanding. A man driven in the advancement of public interest to promote growth and prosperity in the country. It is with immense pride, great honor and deep confidence that I nominate Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, that I nominate Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, the Representative of the Second District of Zamboanga City as our Majority Leader. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion on the part of the Majority to elect the Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe as the Majority Leader of the House of Representatives. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe is elected Majority Leader of the House of Representatives.
Consideration of House Resolution Number 74.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 74 is now in order. The Secretary General will now read the title of the resolution.
Number 74, Resolution Informing the Senate That the House of Representatives have been, has been organized and has entered upon the exercise of its functions.
Move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 74.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 74. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. House Resolution Number 74 is adopted. 75 Informing His Excellency Ferdinand Ramoalis Marcos Jr., President of the Republic of the Philippines That the House of Representatives
Mr. Speaker?
Yes?
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration of House Resolution Number 75.
Is there any objection? Resolution Number 75 is now in order.
House Resolution Number 75, Resolution Informing His Excellency Ferdinand Ramoalis Marcos Jr., President of the Republic of the Philippines That the House of Representatives has been organized and has entered upon the exercise of its functions.
Mr. Speaker, I move for adoption of House Resolution Number 75.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 75. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. House Resolution Number 75 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 1, Concurrent Resolution Providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold the joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. House Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is adopted. The session is suspended while the House transmits the messages to the Senate.
Session must resume.
Mr. Majority Leader?
I move for consideration of messages from the Senate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, consideration of messages from the Senate is now in order. Secretary General is instructed to read the messages from the Senate.
Message dated July 25, 2022, informing the House that the Senate on even date adopted Senate Resolution Number 2 entitled, Resolution Informing the House of Representatives That the Senate has been organized with the election of its officers and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the first regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines.
To the archives.
2022, informing the House that the Senate on even date adopted Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1 entitled, Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convene for its first regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
To the calendar of business for the day.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Consideration of Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is now in order. The Secretary General is requested to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution Number 1 entitled, Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convene for its first regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
Move for the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Is there any objections? The Chair here is none. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is adopted. The floor leaders recognized.
Adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1, authorizing the creation of a joint committee of both Houses to notify the President of the Philippines that the Congress is convened and ready to hear his message. On the part of the House, I move that the following be appointed to the joint committee. Deputy Speaker Roberto V. Puno, Deputy Speaker Camille A. Villar, Deputy Speaker Christine Singzon-Mihan, Deputy Speaker Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The members of the House of Representatives so named are hereby appointed to the joint committee and are requested to immediately discharge their responsibility.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the members of the joint committee time to perform their assigned task and until the House counterpart is ready to report back their accomplishment to this House, I move for the suspension of the session.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The session is suspended. Majority Leader? Sessions resumed. Floor leaders recognized.
Mr. Speaker, may I request our dear colleagues to kindly take their seat? Mr. Speaker, we have received a report from the joint committee that the President has been informed that Congress will convene in a joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon to hear his State of the Nation address. Mr. Speaker, we wish to remind the members of this chamber that all of us must be here an hour before the joint session at 4 o'clock.
The remarks of the acting floor leader are hereby duly noted.
I move that we recognize the Secretary General for an announcement.
The Secretary General is recognized.
Not both for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Ramoalis are hereby requested to attend and participate in the meeting for the purpose of electing the Minority Leader to be held at 2:15 today, July 25, 2022, at the Minority Leader Conference Room, North Wing Basement. Thank you.
The announcement of the Secretary General is duly noted.
Speaker, to give way to the joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon, I move that we adjourn the session until tomorrow, Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
But here, is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The session is adjourned until tomorrow, Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Congratulations, Mr. Speaker.
I request the Deputy Speakers to escort our Speaker to his office and we have to vacate this room, this plenary hall immediately.